Fighting Board Meeting for Monday, December 4th. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and maybe replayed on Westwood Cat Television. We are going to, after open forum, bounce the agenda around a little bit because we're waiting for our fifth member, Dylan, to arrive. He'll be riding a few minutes late, so we'll go right to general business after open forum. So having said that, staff, anything for open forum? Joe?
The only thing I would have quickly is that our 55-plus survey closed today. We haven't gotten the final numbers or looked at any survey results yet, but we do anticipate over 200 responses, so we're pleased with that. So, that's it.
Nothing further.
Anybody from the board, anything?
No.
Nope. Anybody from the audience, anything for open forum? All right, moving right along. Why don't we begin with first general business item, A, PB 2215, 85 Carlisle Road, Parker Landing. Joe?
Not a whole lot to report here. The project has been completed. As-built, been submitted, reviewed by the engineering department. They've inspected the work as well. They are satisfied with everything presented to them, so they have no issue if the board wanted to release the remainder of bond.
And this is the one correctly, right, we released a couple lots, even though we hadn't received the as-built, but apparently there's no issue with that.
Yeah, our revised as-built at that point, but they have, since then, completed everything that engineering satisfaction.
All right. Anybody from the board have anything on this?
Just to confirm, the plan is that's going to be a private way, correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Anybody else? No?
No, I saw the engineering review. It looks great.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so I'm trying to look up the number here. I don't have it for me. Do we have a motion?
Twenty-two fifteen.
Do you want to make a motion?
No, the number for the release of the bond.
Oh, gotcha.
Yeah.
Oh.
Try to put the form G.
Well, you could just indicate, you know, the lease, bond, full release of the bond, remaining bond.
Yep. All right, I would motion, I would make a motion to approve the bond release request for PB 2215, as written in the engineering memo in Form G.
All right, motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oh, yeah, we can, all right, great. Next general business item is PB 1923, 73 Nutting Road, Wendell Place, request to modify a previously approved covenant. Jeff?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, this is unusual, actually. If you may recall, the subject property, it's comprised of multiple properties, and there are multiple property owners. And so, it was always their understanding that there would be some sort of trading of some of the lands as the lots in the subdivision got developed. One of the parties that owned some of the lots would want two specific lots in the subdivision, not currently what they own. And so normally, under subdivision control law, you can't convey or sell any of the lots until such time as there's a security in place, or the improvements have been completed. This was a little interesting, because what they were looking to do is to sort of juggle around amongst the existing property owners, a portion of the property. And so we thought that was consistent with subdivision control law. We did reach out to town council to make sure that this was proper. They agreed, and they have reviewed the document. It's satisfactory to their liking, and all it really does, it affirms and amends the covenant that's already in place, and acknowledges that the existing property owners may transfer this specific set of properties to each other and only to each other, and that all the restrictions are still in place, if that makes sense.
It does.
Okay.
All right, I go to the board. Anybody have any questions or thoughts on this? Bob?
No, I had my questions this morning with Jeff.
Tony?
No, no questions.
Darren?
I was a little confused reading it myself, but I'm glad Jeff just summarized it, and town council has agreed with it. I'm happy with that.
Okay, I've got nothing. Do we have a motion?
I will make a motion to accept PB 1923, 73 Nutting Road, Wendell Place, the request for modification to previously approved covenant.
Second.
All right, we have motion or second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, great. No problem at all.
Thank you very much.
We'll go on to our third general business item, 2324, 364 Littleton Road, request for authorized administrative review and approval for a change in use from personal service establishment to a business or professional office. Joe?
I believe Mr. Eric, Attorney Erickson has some.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Attorney Kevin Erickson, looking for administrative approval to change the use of a tenant space at the multi-tenanted building at 364 Littleton Road, was previously achieved Taekwondo, and will be a professional office use. It will be Alpha Graphics, and that space has been vacant since 2017, but we're excited to have this tenant. We don't think it's an intensive use at all, in fact, less intensive probably than a personal service establishment. And CH Zone District, so use is allowed in the zone.
Great.
Want to add anything to that, Joe?
The only thing I would add is that there were a few comments from the fire department. I don't think they anticipate any major issues. Just as was noted, the building's been, or that unit has been vacant for a little time, so there'll be some things to kind of upgrade. So, I just want to be able to work with the applicant on that.
Great. I'll go to the board. I'll start with Bob.
No, I kind of agree with your assessment about less intense use. I was, the only thing I was looking for was anything dealing with traffic, but it sounds like the town is, professional staff are comfortable with that, so I'm fine. So.
All right. Tony?
No, I have nothing.
Darren?
Nope.
Seems good to me.
Dylan?
I had no concerns.
The only thing I was thinking is it printing. I'm assuming if there's chemicals, they'll go to the Board of Health and make sure storage.
Yeah, and I don't even think, I'm not sure it's even going to require it, but if necessary, certainly they would.
I'm assuming they would. All right, so having said that, do we have a motion to, where are we, approve the change of use, administrative change of use for personal service establishment to a business or professional office for PB 2334, 364 Littleton Road?
I'll make that motion with the modification. It's PB 2324.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So we'll go to our first public hearing, first and only public hearing item, PB 2317, zero and two ten Littleton Road.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, Douglas DeShane are representing Fox River LLC. With me this evening, Kevin Repelik from TDT Associates, as well as Harry Freeman from BrightPath. You'll recall when we left, last met, we had a few engineering issues to clean up, and a lighting plan, and a planting plan. Just like to give Kevin a minute to fill you in on where we are with all those things, and then I do want to talk a little bit about parking and the information that we have provided. So Kevin, if you would, please?
Sure. Again, Kevin Repelik, TDT Associates, project civil engineer. Just a couple of minor comments from engineering relative to stormwater. We had added some additional details to the two isolator rows for each of the underground rechargers, and we also added in some headers on either end of the system to allow larger storm events not to all go through the isolator row. It will, you know, be dispersed over the whole system. More constructability level detail that was added, which was submitted to engineering. I believe that was it as far as stormwater goes. As Harry said, we have submitted also the lighting plan and the updated planting plan as well. So, all of the plans currently submitted have been fully updated, per all of the comments received to date at this point. That's pretty much it from, you know, engineering technical perspective. I'd like to give it back to Doug.
All right, thanks, Kevin. Appreciate that. So I'd like to talk a little bit about what I consider the, sort of, the big issue when we last met, and that was the adequacy of the parking that we had proposed on the property. As you recall, we had proposed 50 parking spots, where the current bylaw requires 71, although as a Dover member project, we felt we had an opportunity to show the board that we did, in fact, have adequate parking. And so what we did, you'll recall that originally, Bob Michaud was our traffic consultant, provided a traffic report, and he did speak to the proposed parking of 50 spots, and in fact, Bob had gone out and done a site visit of, at some of BrightPath's other facilities, and he monitored, and he kept track of what was going on, and I know he submitted that information as part of his original traffic report, where he did agree that, you know, the 50 spaces would be adequate. However, as we discussed at the last meeting, some of the board members had some concerns. So, what I've done subsequent to that, as you know, I've sort of submitted three levels of information in an attempt to make the board comfortable with our parking proposal. As you recall, the first thing I did was to provide you additional information, which I had received from Mr. Freeman with respect to his experience, or his, the company's experience at running multiple other BrightPath facilities throughout New England. And so what I did is I actually gave you an analysis that they did at one of their facilities in Connecticut, Simbury, Connecticut, whereby they essentially tracked the traffic in and out, and the parking throughout the day. And that facility actually has 216 students and 30 to 35 employees, and has 41 spaces. And as you can see from the analysis, essentially, there was no time that there was any parking problems considered, even though the facility was bigger than what we're proposing. And Mr. Freeman, Freeman provided us some additional information, saying that typically, and he is here to speak for himself if you have any questions, but typically, pickup and drop-off of the kids occurs over a two- to three-hour period in the morning, and then again in the, in the late afternoon, early evening, and that they really see more than eight or 10 parent cars at the center at one time. And he said he's never seen or heard anything approaching, 21 cars on-site at any time during pickup and drop-off. And for the most part, they see in centers where they have over 300 childrens, children 15 or so. And he did explain, too, that the teachers do work different hours. They're not all there at the same time, and that typically maximum in their largest facilities, there at most be 25 teachers there during pickup and drop-off, but there's usually far less than that because carpooling, the staggered hours, and whatnot. That essentially was really just providing you additional experience, you know, hands-on, what's happening today at multiple facilities. It was reviewed by our traffic engineer. He had agreed with those conclusions earlier that, you know, 50 spaces will be more than adequate for this project. However, we do certainly consider the board's concerns with it, and so what we've done is proposed a monitoring program that they've employed in their Woburn facility, where there were questions there, too, about whether there would be adequate parking. So, my clients agreed to do a study, and I've actually, I actually gave you a copy of the condition from that special permit that called out the specific monitoring program. And again, this was, that facility had 41 spaces, but I thought that the proposed monitoring program would be applicable to this. We could adjust it for the numbers and times, but essentially what it would do is, within four weeks of the enrollment reaching a certain level, the monitoring program would go through and monitor what's coming out, and I assume produce reports similar, you know, to what we gave you, showing the cars coming in and out over the day, how many are parked at any one time. And then we would repeat that in two additional increments of students, you know, in this case, it was 120, then 150, and then 180. In each instance, that report would be conducted during the traditional morning drop-off and evening pickup periods, and obviously during periods of the year when we were at normal occupancy levels, in other words, non-summer and non-holiday periods. And then the monitoring reports submitted to the board, and in this case, I assume with, to the, to the town engineers, and then we could determine whether, in fact, things are moving, working as smoothly as we suggest they would. And if not, then we're, we're front and center to address it and figure out how to implement corrective measures or modifications, so that, you know, we wouldn't have problems. The third sort of level of information I provided to you was, and these were really meant to be, you know, sort of a draft kind of idea. I know I reviewed the comments that Mr. Starrett had provided to us, and he was nice enough to point out his concerns with each of my proposed options. But I just want to make it clear that the proposed options, which you'll recall, are this one, which would allow us some parking along the entranceway, drive-in parking, which, again, Mr. Starrett pointed out, was not an ideal situation, because we would likely have people pulling out, you know, backing out onto the street, which is not an ideal condition. But I will remind you, we would intend these to be employee parking spots, so they would likely be coming and going outside the areas of pickup and drop-off, or at least, you know, any significant areas of pickup or drop-off. And then the second option was actually to develop a parking lot off the roadway, which you would pull off into the parking lot, which would allow people to park, turn around, and pull out, you know, face-first when exiting onto the access driveway. And we did throw a couple of spots parallel, just so that we could get to the number. And then the third option that'll be available to us, should there be a problem that's identified by our monitoring, is, as you know, my client does control all of the property in the back. There are significant, is a significant number of parking spots back there, and we would propose a walkway, which we would maintain year-round, and we could use that parking for employee parking as well. Mr. Starrett, again, you know, he did suggest that the first option, not great, because you're backing out. I don't recall what his biggest concern was about the second option, because we're getting the parking completely off the road, for the most part. And, but I think it had to do with making sure that we could, could actually do that within the, you know, the resource area buffer zones. And then the last option, I think he suggested his concerns were, one, that we had a parking area, you know, it's 500 feet or so, that we had a walkway. And also, he wanted to make sure that we weren't dedicating spaces out back to the front that were needed for the occupancy of the rear building. But I can assure you, we have significant parking like that, as we're coming into same, some of the same problems other office buildings are finding. You know, we built tons of parking, and they don't use them, people don't go to the office. But, again, I do realize that there are some considerations and concerns with these options, but my intention was just to show you that if the board was comfortable with our initial proposal, yet wanted to employ a monitoring program, which we've offered to do, and there really was a problem, it's not like we wouldn't have any options. So, again, I know these weren't perfect, but again, if we got to a point where we had to provide the parking, I am very confident that we could provide the information necessary to show the walkway, and that we have that parking out back. I also am very confident, after talking with Kevin earlier today, that we could clearly get a parking lot off the road, and still stay out of the 50-foot, no disturb, and stay out of the 100-foot. So we have space, I even brought my own little thing. We do have space, I guess it doesn't work. There it is. We do have space. We proposed the parking lot here, with a couple spots here, but we actually have a significant area out here as well, that we would be outside the 50, outside the 100. So we could have a parking lot here that extended down to here. Now, I don't know, Kevin, can we put parking on this particular?
Those infiltration systems are capable of being underneath parking lots.
So with that.
With adequate cover.
Yeah, with that, I mean, we literally have a very large space that we could put a, potentially even a parking lot with one exit here, you know, and another exit out here farther away from the, you know, farther away from the intersection. So, we are very confident that, you know, should we run into a problem, should the monitoring show the problem, we have a significant number of options where we could, in fact, provide the full 71 spots. But, again, given my client's experience, or the operator's experience, you know, we just don't feel the need to put any more pavement than we need to out here, for now.
I understand.
But again, I think with monitoring and these options, the board can be comfortable that we're, we're protected, and the town's protected as well.
Could I, could I just ask one question on his comment about the infiltration system?
Yeah.
You say that you can put parking over that kind of infiltration system. My only question has to do with how the infiltration system is installed. Does it make a difference? Do you have to lower it?
No.
But as, as designed now, you could put parking?
As long as there's adequate cover on top of it, yes.
We'd have to put more.
We'd have to put a little bit more cover on top of it. It should be, because we're going to have to raise the grade air anyways to flatten out the parking lot, it should be more than enough cover to handle the traffic load.
If you wanted, we could always have engineering review that, if it ever got to a point.
My question was making sure that when it was installed, it was parking lot ready. That's why I was asking that question.
Yeah.
So I'm fine.
I have a quick question. I didn't see the analysis, Joe. Was that?
I can't, I don't find it in here.
It was in a package.
Which analysis? My letter?
The monitoring program and the data from the other center.
From the other center.
I'm sorry. In the center in Connecticut. And if I may, I'm looking at the Simsbury, Connecticut location. Even if there is an analysis specific to Simsbury, Connecticut, the BrightPath Simsbury Childcare Center at one St. John's Place, the exit to the parking lot is on St. John's Place, which appears, for all intents and purposes, to basically be a private road. It connects into like a very small subdivision in the back, but it's essentially a private road that butts onto Tariffville Road, which is, I would call that a secondary street, before it exits out onto Route 202, which I would say is probably a good analogy for Route 110. So, I think in that case, the reason that that parking could work well in that situation is you've got not one, but two different roads to allow traffic to feed out. And I think our feedback to you, the last time you were here, was there isn't sufficient distance. You've got about 50 to 60 feet off of 110 for cars to queue, coming out, in and out of the parking area at peak times. And that left-hand turn in particular onto 110 could back up during peak traffic times, which unfortunately happens to be the times that people are going to be picking their children up from daycare. So, that was, was my concern, and I would like to see the analysis, but I'm not sure that the Simsbury, Connecticut one would be a good analogy, based on the layout of what I see, at least, from Google Maps, as far as like the parking coming and going versus what we have here on, off of 110.
Right, but the, obviously, the, whether or not there's backups coming and going is a function of whether there's adequate parking available. And I think what we were trying to show with the Simsbury analysis, and Joe, you did have my letter up.
I did have it up. It doesn't seem like it got over into the packet, so I apologize.
Oh, no worries. I've got it to you.
I mean, the other thing.
Separate from the first one, so I apologize, but, I get, getting back to my point, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
You know, I thought the big concern, or at least one of the concerns of the board, was, you know, what happens if people are coming in, and there just aren't enough spots for them to pull in and park? And now you've got that.
It's both.
Coming and going. As far as leaving the site and getting onto 110, I mean, I would guess that our setback from the entrance road, or, you know, the entrance onto 110 is probably no different than, you know, any of the other facilities up and down the street.
I think I had less concern about getting on 110. My concern was, and you, if you got into that traffic situation, cars getting off of 110, hitting a queue, and blocking 110. I'm less concerned about the cars suffering, you know, a multiple light queue coming out of the center. It's, does it?
But what's key to allowing them to come in is having adequate spaces for them to pull into.
And, and not having traffic backed up.
Right.
So if they're coming in, and they're trying to take a left, and they're taking a left into a cluster.
Right.
That's, that's what I'm concerned about.
And what we were trying.
I'm not concerned about them coming out on 110.
What we're trying to show with the Simsbury information is that there's never been a problem getting in. But maybe Mr. Freeman wants to elaborate.
If you could just put that plan back up. As these gentlemen were saying, 50 parking spaces is probably about the most that we have at any of our centers. We have about 30 of them between Connecticut, actually, we have about 40 of them between Connecticut and Massachusetts at this point. The issue, I don't think we're really going to have one, as we said, our experience is that we'll have eight to 12 parent cars in there at any given time. You hear 200 kids in a center, and you just say, how? You hear 200 kids in a center, and you just say, how are you gonna handle 200 cars at once, it just doesn't work that way, and that's why we invited people to go out and take a look at how the other centers flow. In this case, I believe that most of the people, or a lot of the people coming out onto 110 would actually be making a right turn anyway, because that's the way that the commuting patterns are gonna take them. So, I don't anticipate you're gonna get that big of a queue with all these cars looking to make a left turn onto 110 at that given time. Also, the beauty of this is that the cars that are looking, or queuing to get onto the access road, onto 110 in this case, really are going to be down, so that you could still get around those cars, it's not like you have to cross over the traffic that's waiting to get onto 110 to get into the parking lot. You know, so I don't think that that's gonna be issue. What we normally do is we have the parents park as close as possible to the building, you know, to make it more convenient to them, which is on that side, which, again, you're still not gonna have problems getting out from there. We, the Simsbury location, although you're right, Mr. O'Connor, the, there is kind of an access road onto it, it really isn't as far, it's probably not more than 100 or so feet anyway, onto Tariffville Road, which is a major cut-through road, there's a major corporate park to the right of that, as you're looking at the entrance to it, and to the left of it also, it gets into the Dayhill Road corporate area, so you have a lot of traffic going on Tariffville Road, as well as, I think it's 20210 over there.
I do want to explore your comment about the left versus the right, and what the source of your data is in terms of that traffic pattern. Are you using the data for the existing business that's there today?
No, no, I'm...
I believe that was all included in the traffic impact analysis that was submitted by MDM, yeah.
Yeah, so I have a bit of a concern about using that to extrapolate to the daycare center, in the sense that I think the population in the business, businesses tend to draw from a wider area, so, yes, I would expect a lot of the traffic heading out towards 495 at the Boston Road Interchange. For the daycare center, you tend to draw from a local population, and I just question whether we're gonna have all the traffic going right, or we're gonna have a lot of it going left to head down 110, to head up 225 into Forge Village and those areas. So, I would like to explore the source of that data just a little bit more, because I don't think they necessarily extrapolate to one another, if that makes sense.
Let me just clarify something, I did not look back at the traffic report, and I was more referring to the morning rush, you know, where you really, it's a more concentrated rush generally at the morning than there is in the afternoon, and I was really referring to the morning rush.
I could see that, I could see...
Traffic trying to get to the highway.
Traffic trying to get to the highway, but in the evening, I see people coming back into town.
Yep.
And I just don't know what those statistics...
Yeah, there is a distribution in the traffic report, and I never got my traffic engineering degree, never wanted to get my traffic engineering degree, give credit to the people that did, but there is a distribution in the traffic report, so that that information has already been presented to the...
The lefts and the rights were all taken into consideration as part of that analysis.
Yeah, so that's all, you already have that information, it's not new information that's required, but they do have a projected one for the daycare use, not for the previous office use.
Right, I would remind the board, we were fortunate enough to have MDM do our traffic study, and as I said, he actually went to some of the other centers to analyze that, and then applied his analytics to this project, and concluded that he agreed that we would have significant parking, and I mean, MDM is a well-respected, you guys use him yourself...
They're very familiar with our community.
If Bob tells us, tells me that he's comfortable with something, I'm, one, happy to hear that, but also, you know, assured that it was done correctly. So, here is the, is the distribution, turning distribution correct? Am I reading it correctly?
Yep. Jeff, you had something?
Yeah, I just, I think I want to remind the board, but also the applicants, I think this project would have to have benefit of an updated access permit from MassStop.
Correct, yes.
So, in terms of the circulation issues, not parking, but circulation issues, if they got a problem, they're gonna have to solve it.
Yeah.
But parking is definitely one of your explicit purviews, even under the modified site plan review, so I just wanna point that out.
What that graphic showed down at the bottom, I guess my gut feel was correct, the evening peak hour, you got 19 going right, and you have five going left, is what they're suggesting, based on the magic that traffic engineers do.
Could we go up to the morning peak, just to see how that differentiates? More of an even split, although less volume in the morning.
As I said, it, and before I got into this business, I couldn't get it either, because, you know, intuitively, you just say there's gonna be a lot of cars coming at one time, but I've been at our centers at all different hours, and you just don't see the volume of interactions that you would anticipate. A lot of people come in with two kids, three kids, you know, so it's not 200 separate cars, it's 120 or 130 separate cars, you have, any given time, you're gonna have, what, 10% of the kids are gonna be sick? You know, so you never, although 200 sounds like a lot, and then you get some that they're gonna, they're gonna come in only for half a day, because mom has a day, has half a day off, or dad has half a day off, so you just don't see the congestion that you'd normally expect when you're hearing the gross numbers. And I became, I converted when I spent enough time at our different centers.
Okay.
Dylan, you have questions?
I have no other questions.
Dylan?
I don't have questions.
Comments?
I think there's gonna be traffic congestion issue, and if we're moving towards a decision, I would condition not only for the monitoring, but of the three options proposed to potentially remediate, I think the only one that's viable is the third one, where parking would be in the back with a walkway, because in both other cases, I think it adds to the potential congestion problem, one, with the backing of the traffic out into traffic, as was in the engineering letter, and then on the second case, you'd have to get people, you'd have to put some sort of a pedestrian walkway across the traffic to get it from the other side parking lot. So, even that space that was pointed out earlier, you'd still need some walkway to get, although that is further back, that actually is probably better.
Yeah, I like that idea, really, to be honest with you, even better.
Because if you put it back there, it's far enough back in the road that you could put a pedestrian walkway, and it probably wouldn't interfere with, you know, coming and going traffic as much.
And, again, that would be employee parking.
Darren?
No, would you guys remind me the enrollment at the Simsbury Center versus the Western Center?
216, and I believe we're...
220?
220, I thought it was 200, but maybe 220. I have way too many of these centers going on in my mind. It's, they're comparable centers.
We have 41 spaces in Simsbury?
Yeah, we have 41 in Simsbury, we have 41 in the Woburn Center that was just approved. I'd say if I looked across our whole portfolio, we're probably in the 40, we have as little as 35 for a center of this size, and as high as 50 is, 50 is traditionally my goal, when I saw the regulations here said 71, it's like, wow, that was interesting. One of the other, the nice, one of the nice things about our use is that we don't, the users that come in, the people, the parents that are coming in, one, they're sensitive to safety issues to begin with, so you don't get people speeding in and out too often, and the other is that they're coming here on a regular basis, so they're familiar with how traffic flows, when's a good time to come, and things like that, so it's not, and the same thing with our staff, we're able to, we have some controls over our staff, if we know that there's an issue with exiting between 430 and 445, guess what, my staff's not leaving, between 430 and 445, you know, it's just those kind of things, so we're able to self-regulate it, because, obviously, if it's inconvenient for the parents to get there, if they don't feel safe, they're not coming there, you know, so everything that we are doing is geared towards the safety of the kids, and, obviously, the perception of the safety of the parents.
I would agree with Dylan, too, that I don't like option one, where the cars are to back out into the access road, I think that would be more of a headache. My initial thought was option three, with staff parking in the back with a walkway to get there, but if there's a way to put a parking lot further into the access road, I wouldn't be opposed to that either.
And, again, if we ended up down that route, I would suspect we would look to maybe having a right-hand turn into that parking lot, you know, not all that far from the entrance, but to exit that parking lot, you'd have to go up and exit farther up on the...
More of like a one-way.
Like, yeah, so you'd go in here, I'm sorry, I can't, my pointer doesn't work there, but, you know, you'd come in here, and exit here.
Be like the tennis courts at parking, or the tennis courts at Robinson.
Be one-way, it'd be one-way, right. And, you know, one-way in, you could have 10 spots on each side, or 12 spots on each side, and, you know, you got 24 spots, and...
If that's the case, too, by using angled parking, you kind of encourage that natural flow, people are less...
One-way, correct.
Are less inclined to try to violate the one-way, if they angle in as opposed to perpendicular.
Correct.
So...
Those are my main concerns, but I think, remains to be seen how the monitoring goes. I'm definitely in favor of the monitoring, I guess the question is...
Well, yeah, the question is, do we seek to have it done now, or do we wait to have it monitored, and then implement it? How the board feels on which way to go about doing it.
I would prefer to have it monitored and wait, I mean, I certainly don't want to see a sea of asphalt, so I'm in favor of that. I also think, I mean, I'm not sure how you plan to have enrollment, if you plan to, you know, staff 200% immediately, or if it's gonna take a little bit of time to achieve saturation.
It's generally two to three years before we get to peak capacity over there.
So, I think we have that time.
You mean, have a monitoring right away, or wait till...
Well, the way it was done previously, if I might excuse me, I didn't mean to interrupt, and I do apologize, here is the, this is actually the provision from the Woburn facility, and you can see what they do, is that the first monitoring program will take place within four weeks of the enrollment, hitting 120 students. So, as soon as you get 120 students, you gotta set it up, get your traffic people in there, and do the monitoring report, and submit it, assuming no problems, that you then have to repeat it once you hit 150, and they repeated it again at 180, and again, it was submitted and reviewed. In this particular case, and I, Harry, perhaps you have a suggestion, you know, where we're a 200-student facility, maybe we want to do the first one at half enrollment at 100, then 150, and then 200, and that way you get your same three...
I'm fine, whatever makes the board comfortable, we're fine with, because, as I said before, the practical side of it is, if there's a traffic problem out there, I'm gonna be solving it before you guys realize that there's a traffic problem out there, you know, so if you want to do the first one at 100, you know, we're doing, effectively by doing the traffic study, we did the initial monitoring, you know, conceptually, theoretically what it's going to be, but more than happy to do it at whatever numbers you want, if you want to do 100, 150, 200, that's fine, because maybe it gives you more comfort that it really is functioning the way that we represented that it is.
All right, before we discuss any further, is there anything, anybody from the audience have anything for this public hearing? All right, so we have options, so we do have a draft decision, do we want to see more conceptual plan of the parking, before we go ahead with that, and adding that language for the monitoring? I mean, I hate to have them come back again, but if we come back real quick, close the public hearing today, how the board feels?
I believe the, and I'm pulling it up now, but I thought I read that the draft decision actually does have...
Some language of the monitoring.
Language on the monitoring agreement.
Yes, just, and I don't know if it's appropriate for me to speak or not, but when I came here the first time, we had thought that this process was gonna be a lot quicker than it ultimately was, and the board had committed to, or I thought that we were in, had a pretty good understanding when we were gonna be getting the approval for it. We are behind the eight ball in terms of our construction periods, so if it's at all possible to make the approval tonight, it would be most appreciated, appreciated. You know, again, I don't think that we're ever gonna get to the eventuality of needing the additional parking, but we're more than happy to have to come back to the board and prove, you know, come up with the best solution at that point. Rather than fully engineering at this point for an eventuality that...
Yeah.
I would be very surprised if it occurs.
All right, appreciate that. Thoughts, Bob?
I'm comfortable at this point.
Okay, Tony?
I'm comfortable, also.
Dylan?
Where's the language for the traffic monitoring in the draft decision?
As well, but I did see something in there.
Is your Woburn facility open now?
It's the store.
No.
That used to be a Chinese restaurant, correct?
Yes.
If anybody would like to buy the canopy that used to be uptight, let me talk to them.
Or the fish tank?
The fish tank was pretty cool.
See it in there? I'm looking, I don't see it.
Page 20. Yeah, it's number 20, we can add in the timeframes.
Oh, here it is. Need to specify in that condition that it would be 100, 150, 200?
I mean, we didn't have the benefit of the actual information that we're reviewing here in the packet, so, I mean, it should be on the record somehow.
Yeah, right, right, I would suggest that we tighten up that language, ask staff to tighten up that language, more mirror we saw was in the other decision, with the monitoring at...
100, 150, and 200 student enrollment.
Yep, and if there's determined to be an issue, then, make any reasonable request on or off-site changes to address safety concerns. Well, I think that it should be that, you know, if there's...
You want there to be more of a...
Parking will be added. Right. And besides that, then I'm fine with it.
So, I'm just trying to clarify, so, I think we got a very good understanding of the board's concerns tonight, do you want to have benefit of a revised draft decision, and do you need to have the public hearing open or not?
I don't think we need to have the public hearing, I think we can close it, I think if you can go by our direction, and fix, change, amend the decision, to add the language with the monitoring, and the caveat that if there's a concern that parking will be added, we could close it tonight.
So, I just want to make sure that any draft decision allows for those eventualities, that they retain, or would retain, all the rights necessary to make those improvements, so I just would want to add language to that effect, to make sure that's all set.
That's fine.
So that they legally have the ability to do that, it would still require, in some of the options, third-party approval, like Conservation Commission, but I think, I think it'd be wise to just flesh that out a little more, and if you're closing the hearing, it's up to you if you want to see your revised draft at your next meeting, or maybe you would like to authorize a member of the board, like the chair, to review the changes to make sure it's consistent with the board's approach.
Happy seeing the draft, or...
Up to you, folks.
Let Mike take a look at it, either one.
Comfortable with you?
That's fine.
Expedite the process if Mike did it, as opposed to coming out for the next meeting? Potentially?
Yes.
All right, then I'm happy with that. I think Mike has a pretty good understanding of what you're doing.
I mean, others are welcome to review it as well, we just can't, obviously, outside of the public meeting, so...
All right, having said that, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
If you want to start on the motions for the...
We need two, one for Stormwater, and one for the decision, Jeff?
Yes, please.
So, we need a motion on PB 2317, 0 and 210, Littleton Road, approval of site plan review for the daycare facility and associated parking lot utilities, might work?
I'll make a motion that we approve PB 2317's for the site plan review, with the decision included here, and as amended, to include... with the decision included here and as amended to include the traffic monitoring information as discussed this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion of second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yep.
All right, we have a decision, stormwater management for PB two-three-one-seven-zero and two-ten Littleton Road. Is there a motion to approve the-
I'll make a motion that we approve the stormwater management permit for PB two-three-one-seven with the decision here as amended this evening to include, I guess, no, I guess we didn't, do we have to include the traffic monitoring this? No. So, as, as, as included in the packet tonight.
Motion is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. Well, thank you very much. We'll work with Jeff, make sure that language is perfect, and thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you.
Good luck with your consideration. And if you know two-hundred youngsters who would like to go to the best daycare ever, send them our way.
Okay, make one request, Joe. I think maybe it should just be in our attachment for a future packet, but it would be nice to get into the record that traffic data from Simsbury that we did not see this evening. So I'd like to make sure that that's entered in the record, because it was discussed on the record.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, our last piece of business, we have general business item D, joint discussion with McMac regarding proposed MBTA communities bylaw.
Scott, you can sit up there, too, wouldn't you?
If you'd like me to.
I guess if we could have dual membership here, we can actually have a quorum.
You do, and you should probably call McMac to order.
Call McMac to order. So moved.
All right, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Thank you for coming. Jeff, you want to start us off?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairs. Last Thursday, McMac had a meeting, and they went over a number of issues. They reviewed some of the draft district areas, they tackled some policy questions and approaches to the proposed zoning bylaw amendment, and I just want to provide a summary of what that advisory committee agreed to. First, they came up with several recommendations for consideration by the planning board. The first is they established the following recommended areas for the proposed multifamily housing overlay district, and this is as a starting point for the public hearing process. They separated this into three different categories. The top favorability category went to areas A and B on the map, which generally consists of the Nishoba Valley ski area, and Tech Park West with a few areas on the other side of Littleton Road next to Andor, including Orchard Square. However, that support for area A, for Nishoba Valley ski area, it was contingent upon a successful development agreement that could be reached between the select board, the project proponents, and perhaps the planning board, that would limit the total number of units to a suggested maximum at this time of about six-hundred units, and such an agreement would have to be executed prior to town meeting. So that committee was very supportive of this, but if the entirety of area A was included in the overlay district, that could allow for, you know, a huge number of units, potentially, and that's just not what they are proposing at this time. They're really looking to have a few areas dedicated to multifamily housing and sort of embrace and expand upon the active commercial recreation use of the property. So, so that's that first part. The second area, we had a medium-plus-plus favorability, was a portion of area G, which is better known as Tech Park East, and at the end of it, the committee recommended keeping about two of those parcels within the draft overlay district. There are no immediate plans to develop the entirety of that area. This is more to help that Tech Park adjust to some of the changing market needs, and they would like to embrace an opportunity to provide some housing for either the high-tech industry there, some of whom might work there, and or Nishoba Valley Technical High School across the street. They were open to exploring, you know, more possibilities in the future, but for the short term, and given the fact that they would be well above the minimum required number of units, they thought it more appropriate to scale back for here and now for area G. The third area that they recommend including in the here and now is actually comprised of two parcels. This has a medium-plus favorability, and that is the Westford Swim and Tennis Club at two-fifty Littleton Road, right where the D is. And secondly, the Westford Regency, two-nineteen Littleton Road. So all the other areas at this point in time, there's been sort of a weeding-out process, and remember, McMac has been meeting quite diligently since July, more meetings than they thought, I believe. But all the other areas at this time, they recommend not including, at least for the start of the public hearing process. They're trying to balance what they believe might be best for the community, in other words, going larger than the bare minimum to satisfy the mandate, because it creates some positive opportunities for the town, but they're also looking to see what might be more saleable to town meeting voters. So they feel if they come in too large, too many potential units, that might be a turn-off to some voters at town meeting. So currently, that's why the committee recommends keeping at least these areas in the mix for now, for the start of the public hearing process, and to be responsive to comments that come up as part of that process, knowing that the areas could still be, you know, shaped significantly, added to or reduced, depending on that process. So that is where they are for that, and we're definitely looking for some high-level direction from the planning board tonight, as we anticipate that you would be the board to actually sponsor the zoning bylaw amendment. McMac is an advisory committee, and they've been looking at this, you know, a long time and many hours. So one of the things we're, we're looking at, not only is the areas, we'd like some input on what you think about their recommendations for the starting areas for the district. There's other items to the draft bylaw that we hope to get some high-level input from you folks, one of which is a requirement that ten percent of the units be affordable at eighty percent of the area meeting income. There's a couple of reasons for that. One is to simply provide more affordable housing. The other is to have the ability to sort of maintain our subsidized housing inventory. And the third is to have leverage that we might not otherwise have to try to gain some project features or housing types or styles that we cannot require under the bylaw, but that might be, could be used to incentivize more of the kinds of housing or projects or features that we would like to see, but that we just can't require under the bylaw. The other thing is there's some tentative architectural design standards. McMac has looked at this a few times. Our consultant, Dodson and Flinker, provided initial starting point. Our committee gave them direction of, we want more. It was, they wanted more detail, it was too vague, so they gave a lot more detail. McMac hasn't really had a chance to weigh too much in on the added detail, so we're anxious to see if you think it's too far, should we scale it back? And then another variable is the other, if you're going to have mixed-use development, some of the uses are permitted as of right in the underlying zoning districts, some require a special permit to be allowed. We're just high-level thought in terms of what do you think is the best approach to handle mixed-use development? In some cases, you could say, hey, these uses, they're not harmonious with multifamily housing, maybe they just shouldn't be allowed in this district. Or you could take the approach, if you want to have mixed-use development, anything other than the multifamily housing, maybe you need special permit relief from the planning board to make sure that it's in harmony. So there's simple ways to address this, there's more complicated ways to address it. And then the high-level question is also the strategy about leverage and incentives, and what is the best approach or approaches to try to approach town meeting? Do you come in with what you think is best? Do you come in with a fallback? Do you have two separate warrant articles? That's something that we would expect this board to tackle as we get further along in the public hearing process, but we just want to make you aware, because there are these philosophical questions. Do you just go for the minimum, or do you go for what you think is, is best for the town, or do you bring both to the table, educate voters, and whatever they decide, they decide? If I got this wrong, there are plenty of members of the McMac committee to correct my misunderstanding. That's the short version.
It's a short version.
Good summary, yeah.
Sure. Okay. So there is a graphic, I think, in your packet, it's a marked-up, it shows kind of what was started with at the beginning of the process, what was probably in the original action plan that was approved by the state. We have some in case folks from the audience want to see this, or any of the committee members. But also, it, there's been a couple of times that the committee has removed some parcels for consideration. We kind of show that with the hatching, to show what got removed. I don't know if anyone wants any of these.
So just as a question, parcel C, that's really just the undeveloped land, is that correct, between the office building and the self-storage?
No, it includes that, but it's, it's more than that.
I'm just trying to figure what is there. Is there anything there now?
So there's Bock Honda.
Oh, okay, all right. So it goes all the way past there, okay.
Asian Plus.
All those.
All right, so it goes further than what I was looking at, okay.
Yeah.
And I think a number of people were concerned about what the setbacks would be, particularly from Littleton Road, and, you know, one side, and then the highway on the other side, would folks want to live there? Would there be concerns about inequality for new residents there? So it just raised a lot of concerns, more than I guess any other area during the different public sessions.
What does the crosshatching indicate?
Those are areas that were in the mix, that the committee recommends be removed. So it just goes to show you how much they've, they've looked at this, and, you know, there's a wide net cast initially, and the hatching shows the areas that they recommend being removed at this time, at least for the here and now.
One of the things I think the committee's been concerned about is the compliance model numbers. While they're important, the compliance model is not perfect. The state tried to, you know, develop something that could be used across one-hundred-and-seventy-seven different communities. It doesn't factor in things like a steep slope, so, you know, for instance, the show has a rather large hill over there, but it just imagined, you know, a pretty flat site. It doesn't account for your septic needs. You know, the capacity is strictly just the area times fifteen units per acre, and that's the number that the compliance model gives you. So it's not necessarily realistic, it's not a real build-out analysis, but it does come in rather high for what's realistic for Westwood.
Can you move the map down just a little bit, Joe? So, across from D, is that where that office building is that's empty?
Yes.
Okay.
And Enterprise.
Enterprise, Math Museum. And Regency.
So, one concern that I would have in the exclusion is that if, if there are businesses in town that would benefit from this and want to, you know, and then we just initially exclude them, you know, is that fair to, to them? You know, as, as somebody who could take advantage of this and who has a building that's sitting empty, you know?
I've struggled with the same issue, Michael, and, and kind of, I contemplated talking with this to Jeff about potential special permit, a potential special permit route for this, but I think it's outside of the scope of what McMac is tasked to talk about. But it's something that has, I've had private thoughts about as well. Because it, because it's, you know, I, you know, I feel, I feel a little, you know, like you're bestowing, you have a magic wand, and you're just like picking parcels and, you know, giving them this great tool and excluding others, and, you know, you know, it's kind of, it's kind of an odd place for me.
Yeah, I would kind of agree there, because, you know, we're given a task we have to complete by, in a very short period of time.
Yeah.
I mean, this is something that we could look at comprehensively as a long-term project, have a lot of potential benefits, but unfortunately, we have a very short timeline, and to get something passed at town meeting, we want to have something that's manageable, and, you know, it's going to be hopefully well-received, so.
And I think I want to add, I think, as Joe pointed out, the model, the state model, is so extreme and is just, it doesn't take into account anything as far as, you know, grading, septic, any of that. So the numbers, when you look strictly at the state model, are ridiculously high, and I think the thought of McMac was, we're afraid to scare the public.
Right.
You know, with thousands and thousands of units is what, what the numbers would be.
I mean, it's, frankly, it's ten times, you know, what we're, the nine-twenty-four.
Well, a couple of things. First of all, on those, those particular lots or parcels, we were looking at depth as an issue. In other words, we're trying, we're probably looking at multi-story buildings, you know, fifteen units per acre, frontage to one-ten, the traffic on one-ten, that was a concern. Also backing up to four-ninety-five. The other thing is flexibility. If you look at, just, if you took one area, you could take area B and say, that would do, that would satisfy the minimum. We could probably come up with a case that says, we could send that to the state and say, this satisfies the minimum. But what are the chances of that entire parcel becoming available over time? And when, when you look at using the multiple parcel approach, it gives you the flexibility. There may be a parcel developing up in Tech Park East, or in Tech Park West, either one, and another one, and they would be off one-ten, they would be somewhat shielded from one-ten, and you could have a nice individual area, it could be mixed-use, it could be, you know, affordable housing. So that's kind of the thinking that some of us had on that. And going whole, for the entire thing, it would just give an envision of a lot of them, but I don't see that happening, because you'd have to replace all of the stores that are there to get that build-out for that one place.
Now, if I'm not mistaken, D contains a parcel that might be a good candidate for such a development in the near future.
Yeah, I think, excuse me, I think that was one that, some, somebody was looking at that before, and the soils didn't perk, I don't think, or there was some issue about the numbers that they wanted to put in there, and just the, the site wasn't that suitable for that particular one. It might be-
It might be.
Under this one.
I'm just, I'm just wondering why not include that, so that we do give that-
It is included.
Are you, are you talking about the swim and tennis club that Hanover was exploring previously? That is still included.
That's D. That's the one parcel from there.
It says next to it is, yeah.
A, B, and D.
It's A, B, part of D.
Okay, I missed that one. I thought it was A and B.
So, yeah, that's the one parcel from D that's remaining currently under McMac's-
Now, I understand now, okay.
Same thing with this area C slash D-two, it was called at one point, is the Regency. That's the one parcel that's remaining from this area at this point. This little collection of parcels over here was at one time part of the bigger area C, it's now been included into area B.
And is E Balsam Circle?
E is Balsam Circle. That one came out pretty early after Strategic Planning Retreat, a lot of people hated it. I don't think necessarily understood why it was in there. It was mostly for this one parcel, Seventeen Carlisle Road, they had asked to be included in it. It was included with Balsam Circle in order to get it to be five acres and count towards our compliance. But I think a lot of people just didn't understand its purpose and weren't fans of it. So that came out pretty early. And then most recently, area F, which is Westwood Valley Marketplace and Plaza across the way, also came out. A lot of people concerned about Whole Foods going away. As part of any development, they want Whole Foods to stay, so that's also, I guess, been the lowest-received area.
Part of the thinking, too, is that, you know, with potential units being created, there's still going to be a need for, you know, services and, you know, that's already established and functioning well, so I think that was part of the rationale as well.
So I guess the question of the board is, how do we want to proceed? Do we want to proceed with the, this or some iteration of this? Do we want to proceed to public hearing saying, this is what we think, but there are other opportunities?
Well, we need something to at least be a starting point for the public hearing process.
I'm comfortable with proceeding with this as our starting point for the public hearings.
So, I guess, first and foremost, Jeff touched on this, there are two-
So I guess first and foremost, Jeff touched on this, there are two philosophies here. The first one is, let's pick a spot, check all the boxes, send it to the state and we're done. The second thought is, can we create something nice for the town of Westford? I'm of that school of thought, I think staff is, I'm sure you guys are too. So that's why we have to really scrutinize all of this. I happen to be in a fortunate situation where I own a piece of property in another town that's a little ahead of us on the McMac and all kinds of calls about the piece of property. Not one person talked to me about affordables. Everything's market rate, you know how much money you can make? Oh, we'll make a fortune there. Well, I don't think that's the purpose of this. I also believe that we need to have two warrant articles. The first one is the best one that we can come up with. The second one is a pared-down version of that, just in case the first one doesn't fly. So we have something because the clock is running.
Right.
Tewksbury, if you follow the Lowell Sun and all, just come up with their plan. They have Plan A, Plan B. The mistake they're making is they're sending both plans to the state. Now, if the state picks B and over A and they really want A, that's no good. So I think you really have to look at this and say, okay, what's the best plan for Westford?
Yeah, so I think to that point, Scott, we kind of start here with what the parcels are. But I agree, I mean, I think there's a number of other things we have to discuss here that we started to and we need to get the board's opinion on. One, I am heavily in favor of the 10% affordable component. Anytime we're putting a development in, we should never.
Down the road too far, I think, could we take?
I'm just saying, we should never go back and that's what you're saying to, but we've got to start with just the parcels.
Hold on, but I have a question. So, and first of all, I want to thank McMac because I actually really like the proposal you brought us. I think it's, I think it's very wise, I think it's, you know, still above the minimum, but it kind of is controlled and it doesn't put everything on the table all at once, which I think is good. To Bob's point on the affordable, I had a question about parcel G. Because when I read through the narratives from the folks who I think presented to you, I guess just in reading through the willingness of the property owner to sort of, you know, make something nice for the town of Westford at the risk of being indelicate, I came away the least impressed by what I read in that narrative in that they weren't really willing to consider affordable, didn't seem like they were interested in age restricted, they really wanted something. When I read it, it felt like they wanted a way to be able to create apartments that could potentially house people who would work in Tech Park East. And there's not anything necessarily wrong with that, but I'm not sure how well that fits into that criteria, Mr. McKay, of like something that's really good for the town of Westford that's tied into the vision. So did you guys have a feel for that? I see that you scaled it down, but I'm wondering if there isn't almost like a phase B or like a second cut of this we can think about, about expanding it in the future and maybe we take G out for now.
Well, we haven't, I don't think the group together is, we're trying to come up with the best plan first.
Yeah.
We haven't gotten to the pared-down version of it.
Okay.
The thing that bothers me the most is through comments by staff, is that there are a lot of people coming to town inquiring about different parcels and their question is, what's the buy-in if we don't have to do affordables? In other words, how much, how much money per unit can we pay if we don't have to do affordables? That's not a good sign right off the bat. So my advice to your board is, when it comes to that, if people come in front of you, make it 100 grand a unit, 200 grand a unit. You know, you're going to make it hurt so that they want to do it. We have to incentivize the affordable stuff. You know, and it doesn't always have to be money, it can be something else. I mean, we can be creative about this whole thing, but we've got to have that thought in mind because I really think that, you know, this is going to be a windfall for a lot of people. And I just think that it's, it needs to be looked at and scrutinized.
A lot of units too, I mean, if it's 900 units, that's. Potential. Potential, but that's a lot of units that if there wasn't affordable component, that's a lot of catch-up.
That would hurt our SHI.
Yeah.
It would just kill us.
And that's a concern, yeah. Just to be clear, Dylan, G, Kateris is representing, they just sent an email, nobody presented.
Oh, okay.
So there was no, you couldn't get a feel in the room because they weren't present.
Okay.
But I think, you know, workforce housing is a, you know, is a priority for the state, so maybe that's where their head was at, but I can't speak to that.
Yeah.
We did, in our conversations, we let them know that as of, at least right now, knowing the public hearing process hadn't started, that at least McMac was considering a 10% affordability requirement. Maybe with opportunity to waive or reduce for good cause, not for no reason. But, and they were aware of that. They also expressed some interest, they understood what we relayed to them about McMac's concerns and that limiting it to a couple parcels. They too would be interested if there was a willingness to explore an agreement that would restrict the number of units but have more flexibility for the where because they have a lot of variables in terms of as leases come up, which tenants might be willing to relocate to other buildings or not. So they, if there was a willingness, they'd be fine with a cap, but maybe a little more flexibility in the where.
Will the state allow that?
That's a question that we're addressing with the state.
I mean, I'd be very interested in that, right? So if we say, okay, parcel G is available, but only for so much.
So the other, the other thing too, like Jeff just touched on, is that when you look at these parcels, you have to say to yourself, is this going to be a one or two year away? Is it going to be five or 10 years away? Because I think you have all of them represented here, especially Tech Park East. I mean, there's long-term leases and things down there, they've already come out and said, we're a long way from doing this, but we'd like the ability to be able to do it.
Are there anything that, are any of them one to two years away?
Yes.
Yeah.
Not many.
Parcel B, right?
Parcel A?
Parcel A, it all depends.
Not agreement.
Parcel B.
A portion of B.
Or area B.
A portion of B.
A portion of B, yeah.
And, you know, there's, and there are some folks here tonight to also speak, but some of them have indicated they have, they're open to either partnerships and they don't have any active uses on the property, so they could be in a position to start sooner rather than later.
Yeah, one thing to keep in mind is we're establishing the opportunity here with the overlay district. There's no requirement that we build a single one of these. There's no, we have to build them. What we have to do is create the envelope or the overlay that will allow that by right and then let the economy work through it and we work through it and it develops over time. It could take 15 years, it could take 30 years.
In terms of the build-out too, I'd add that there's, what is it, you know, 177 affected communities and only so many dollars that are going to be dedicated to this. So you have to look at like the whole, like Scott said, you know, there's activity in Lexington and Tewksbury and other towns. So, you know, I don't, I don't expect this deluge of activity, but, you know, we have to be prepared for it should it, should it come.
So I think, Jeff, how do you want us to proceed from here?
First would be great to get feedback from the planning board on the areas. Do you want it as per the recommendation? I heard a couple of suggestions for maybe including a particular parcel or two back in. It's, we just need a starting point, it's still very flexible, it's fluid throughout the public hearing process, but we do need a starting point.
I like the starting point.
I would hope so.
I'm, I'm comfortable with this as a starting point.
Yeah.
I think this is good work and I don't know why, I have no reason to question it.
Right, and I think that through the public hearing process, if there's somebody who feels like they're being, they can come forward and we can discuss it with them, yeah. Okay. Now, go ahead.
Got a couple of other things. We have on our schedule, one of our plans was to submit a draft to the state sometime this month, toward the end of the month. And to just get a feel if they would accept that. In other words, there's just a trial run, not for formal approval, just a preliminary thing to see if what our plan is will fly.
What's in the, what is in that draft?
Well, the draft would be the draft by law and a layout that we have here saying this is what we want to do. This is what the overlay is going to look like, this has the potential for so many, let them look at it.
All right, so I guess I'm comfortable with the plan. I guess I'd like us to discuss further the bylaw, I had a few questions about it.
We're going down that road.
Not sure I'm ready to say I agree with that yet.
But can I add, on the plan, we're talking about submitting A, B, and that little piece of G and Regency and swimming tennis, right? We're taking out these other areas that we've taken out. Okay.
We didn't want to go to our GIS department to make changes until.
Yeah, yeah, no, 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 no.
And so as far as what we show the state, I don't want to show the cross-hatched areas at all. As far as what we showed the town during the public hearing process, I would like to show those areas. I'd like to let them comment on what was not put in and whether or not there's merit to adding them in in some portion.
You know, I don't know though, Bob, I mean, we could go all around town then and say we decided not to add these parcels, right? I mean, there's a bazillion parcels that we could potentially add in.
No, I'm, but, okay.
You know, I think that.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
So you're saying even after we go through the public hearing process on all of this, even then when we go to town?
No, going into the public hearing process, share, share what we're seeing tonight.
Okay.
I don't want to share this little detail to the state, but share it with public hearing. Not, no, when we come out of public hearing, we're going in with specific parcels to town meeting. I agree.
So in that, also think about Plan A and Plan B.
Right.
So let's come up with a Plan A, which is hopefully what we've outlined, and then say, okay, if we have to pare it down, what would we take out just so that it's not so scary?
And I think through the benefit of the public hearing process, we're going to get the feel of the town.
Hopefully, yeah.
And be able to say, well, okay.
I'm not sure, I'd have to see numbers and have to hear the town before I knew what they considered scary.
More than one.
Do we want to discuss affordability? Would that be the next step, Jeff?
Yeah, so I don't know, I know we have some folks here that were hoping to give very brief discussion about at least one of the area. We have a couple of either property owners or prospective proponents here and I don't know if that would make a difference to the boards.
I would say if there's anybody whose area we're looking to limit, certainly, I mean, it's up to the board. Do we want to hear from, from some folks? Is there anybody whose area we're looking to cut in this proposal that want to be heard? Anybody from the audience?
I don't believe so.
And it certainly won't cut anybody off, does anybody want to be heard at this point?
Jumping.
Certainly encourage it during the public hearing.
Right.
Okay, so the board is comfortable with the McMac proposal for the where. And so now, I think we need to go through some of these items. And then lastly, there's some draft language in your packet. We are looking to get, we know there are some issues with the language consistency, some of the diagrams, but we're looking to get high-level input and direction from this board so that we can work with counsel and the consultant to refine it.
At the high level, the question I have is, and I'm on the fence on this, I'm open to both styles. You can either have the bylaw and have design guidelines separate, and that's what we did with Route 110 Master Plan. You know, we brought, we separated those out so that the design guidelines can always be updated outside of the town meeting vote process.
Yep.
Or you can embed it as it is here, but it makes for a very, very lengthy addition to the zoning bylaws.
It, it does, for the short term and for simplicity, we asked the consultant to just, that's a question that was raised, we want it separate or embedded, and for now, to just get the thought out there. They put it in, so there's one document that everyone's looking at.
Now, there were some high-level points in here that, one, I noticed that trash and recycling are included in this and that goes against the policy of the Board of Select, the Select Board. And my question is, do we want to talk to the Select Board about amending that policy so that we don't have a policy that's different for this district versus multifamily housing elsewhere in town? But the policy for the Select Board is, I think it's four or more units. They no longer will provide trash and recycling pickup. But yet in this, we do that against that policy. So that for me, I'm looking for some input from the Select Board on how they feel about that.
So, so what this draft language does say is that in an effort to promote sustainability, they are saying that if you take advantage of this, then you must provide trash and recycling services for the development. What the Select Board policy says is who is or is not on the hook for it. So if, if you want a.
So, oh, okay, so maybe I misread that. So the trash and recycling services would have to be provided by?
It has to be provided for the project and if the Select Board.
It doesn't have to be provided by the town.
No, it has to be provided for the project by, if the, if the Select Board policy says the town is not going to be providing those services to that kind of development, then the applicant would bear the responsibility of ensuring that's being provided. Our only goal was to make sure that recycling is mandated and required for those projects.
Okay, so I didn't read that quite correctly, so, okay, I'm comfortable with that, that's, that was my concern.
It could still raise some issues potentially for their current policy, so we'll just, we'll make a note of that.
And there is a lot of little things in here I would be saying in terms of picking up the definitions. I noticed, for example, you define MBTA, but you don't define LRTA in the definitions and yet LRTA is used in the bylaw.
Yep.
And there's things like that.
Are we, we're in bylaw language feedback?
So. Jeff, I thought we were going to go through, you know, talk about affordability, talk about these points and now we're into specific language feedback, I have both.
I didn't do it.
So, yeah, let's go back to affordability. Yeah, let's go back to affordability.
Fantastic.
All right, so the number thrown out is 10%.
Yep. That is the maximum that we can require. So the state, the state's goal is to just get more housing units, period. They, I'm not saying they don't care about affordability, but there is no, that's not their mission in this. It's get more units, period. They do say that you can require 10% of the units be affordable. If you want to require more than 10% of the units, well, we can't do that without very specific studies that would go our way and we feel as though that's not, that's an uphill battle and it's not worth fighting in the here and now, in our opinion, with our time constraints.
Right now, we're above the 10% threshold and I don't want to see, especially large developments, putting us below that threshold. So I'm a strong proponent for maintaining 10% as the requirement. And there'd have to be some pretty strong arguments to convince me to pare it down somewhat, but.
But you're open to that for the right situation.
It'd have to be the right situation because I don't want to go back to what we had before where we didn't control our destiny in this town.
So as I said earlier, there can be fee in lieu of, and if you can get enough fees in, then the town can collaborate with someone to build more affordables to offset the other. I mean, that's another possibility.
That's a possibility and it would, and that would be the one plate, one way I would be open to that, but it would have to be a pretty exceptional fee.
You can set it.
Yeah.
It's interesting.
But I think for, for this exercise, I think we need to maintain the 10%. I don't think, I think that's a decision down the road if we want to try to, if someone comes in with a proposal to say, oh, we want to offer cash instead of affordability.
Or, or some other, you know, there could be.
Remediation.
There could be something unique about a particular location that's a one-time opportunity that really would benefit the community that we don't, we can't legally require, but this could be a way to sort of make a fair trade where everyone benefits.
I guess I would be more in favor of instead of fee, is having that entity be required to see through the construction of that affordable component elsewhere on their own so that it was in their best interest to keep the cost down and to see it to fruition.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that.
Free is certainly an option, but we always end up in situations where there's something unforeseen and the project doesn't get complete and now we've lost traction on going towards the 10%.
I'm not, I mean, I'm struggling to understand the scenario of the particular parcel that would not allow a developer to put a 10% affordable housing component into the mix. But I'm, I'm open to the fact that I don't know all of the scenarios that you do. But it feels a little bit like if we collect enough fees, we can build affordable housing somewhere else and I don't know why we wouldn't just integrate that into our community because that's what we've done with that. That feels consistent with what we should want in Westford, but.
So here's a scenario for you. What happens if there is a location and you look at all these locations and there's a lot of things we can't do in this bylaw? So you're likely going to end up with the highest and best use, which will likely be large apartment-style buildings. And while that will serve a lot of good, it's that we have a lot of folks. And while that will serve a lot of good, it's, we have a lot of folks in town who would prefer a certain kind or style of housing, and we can't require that. So imagine if you could have a portion of a project actually provide the kind of housing and style of housing for, say, persons in their 60s, 70s, 80s who want to downsize and have single level living that we can't require that they build, that you're providing a real need for the community. That could be paired up with, you know, that's less profitable building for them. So to ask developers to do it out of the goodness of their heart, well, they don't usually stay around in business. So, but it is something that I think is at least worth considering. And it could, it could be paired up with other projects or, or features or improvements or even workforce housing instead of affordable housing that is still a valuable need for the community. So I wouldn't write it off. I think there are plenty of opportunities. We just have to, you just have to take the mindset, in my opinion, you're not going to waive it unless you're really getting something that you think is in the best interest of the community, and that will change over time, like.
And that would depend upon the numbers for that particular proposal.
Right. And, and your, the importance of the SHI may vary over time. Like, it may be a big deal to you now, maybe it is later. But maybe, you know, the other thing is if you have a decent sized overlay district that only requires 10% affordability, most comprehensive permits require 25 of the units be affordable, you know? So there's some, it's not perfect, but I'm just saying the 10% isn't everything in terms of the SHI. And I encourage you to at least keep an open mind and on a case by case basis, do what you think is just in the best interest of the community.
Yeah, well, as a starting point, then, should we, board agree that we're at 10% with the ability to waive in the right circumstances?
Yep.
Great.
Sounds right.
Architectural design standards.
At the high level, one of the things I struggle with here, with two concepts in here, it called for public sewer. I think that might have been a typo.
Yeah, we flagged that too, so.
Don't think the consultant knows Westford in that respect?
They do, they know of, but I think they're saying, look, you've got to connect or have a compliant Title V system. So we're suggesting, let's just acknowledge Westford being Westering and get rid of that.
Next comes to how they discussed the overall standards. They gave us all the options similar to what we saw at the workshop about a month ago. But, you know, you just talked about apartment buildings. There is language in here talking about massing being similar to the residential areas. And I'm thinking, first off, this is pretty much all commercial highway. And if you're looking for similar massing, you're never going to get an apartment building. So I, I wasn't comfortable with the way they put that language in there. So I think the massing needs to somehow be lessened to allow for the wider variety of options.
So I think most of the areas that we're talking about are the areas that we're pretty confident something's going to happen. They're not going to be off. They're not going to be on 110. So the massing, they're going to be by themselves, let's call it that way.
And I'm fine for that. It's just that the way it was written in here, I read it as you, no matter where you put it, you were trying to keep it like the west of, the rest of Westford. And I agree, if it's not visible, and that's what we came up with at the workshop, then the massing can be, be larger and can be adapted to that visibility. So I'm fine with that. It's just I don't think the language in the bylaw accurately reflects that, that concept.
And at the time, there were a lot more portions up and down Littleton Road in the mix. And so I think the McMac had a lot of concern about how that might affect the character of 110. And so now after the pairing down, I think there's far fewer properties along Littleton Road. And this also goes to some of the subdistrict areas where they were thinking of along Littleton Road and some of the roads to have different setback requirements for the first, you know, set distance. Some of those may be less important now given on what's still left on the table, but that's something for the board to consider.
So I agree, Scott. It's just that I'm looking at my, my item D here, buildings that'll be composed of masses that are similar in size. I'm like, that doesn't account for the setback concept that we discussed at the workshop. The other thing in here is some of the, I think we need a few more cross references to the dimensional requirements and other concepts in the bylaw such, they seem to write their own concept for lighting. And we already have some pretty good language for lighting in some of our other overlay districts, such as the senior residential multifamily I looked at. And so I'm just, want to see us make more use of the similar language so we don't end up with an overlay district that has a totally unique concept that, where we could have made it similar, make it easier for the boards, the, the planning board and the ZBA to, to follow through on in the future. As I say, some of the definitions, definitely need to go through this on the definitions. I did notice we defined craft brewery, and I was wondering if that was, I was wondering why that got slipped through, but.
Maybe get one.
Maybe we're going to get a craft brewery.
I think, I know that they, I'm sorry, Dylan, I know the consultant did take into account Westford's specific criteria in terms of setbacks and things like that, Bob, so certainly could be tightened up, I guess.
Oh, yeah. It's just that in some areas, they were, seemed to be redefining it. On the positive side, I mean, I learned a lot. It's kind of like I say, I learned a lot from that workshop. I'm looking at some of the diagrams in here. It's very well thought through, you know? It made me think about when they were showing the L-shaped structure with the change in roof lines. That actually, yeah, that right there, that, that's a concept that, you know, kind of captures something that will help us in the future in terms of architectural style, make this fit in. So, yes, there's a lot of positive here.
Dylan, you had them?
I didn't see it in there in terms of roofline orientation to favor southerly exposure for the primary roofline to allow for better use of light, solar and things like that, renewable energy sources. We've heard about that from people that have come in front of us in the past and talked about renewables. So to whatever extent we can work that in. I, to that point, I did have a, just feedback, Jeff, on section, I think it's 8 dot 2, 8 dot 10 dot 7 subsection 5 regarding exceptions for renewable energy installations. It's, it gives the planning board the right to waive the height and the setback requirements to accommodate the installation of, and then it gets very specific, solar photovoltaic, solar thermal living and other eco roofs, blah, blah, blah. I think that we could clean that up and just say we have the right to waive any installations that support renewable energy sources of any kind that benefit the parcel or the property. Because, I mean, who knows? Right now, so, solar is the thing that everybody's using now, but who knows? That could be different in the future or something. Yeah, geothermal or even wind or something. If you have a higher, you know, roofline and you're down near Neshoba, who knows? Maybe they can put small wind turbines on the top of the roof and we might need to deal with that. So I just don't think we should limit ourselves by specifying solar there.
And along those lines, I know they talked about compact cars, but they never talked about EV.
Yeah.
And I think we do have some new standards in the town. We want to make sure that EV is factored in.
So there will be some requirements as part of just building code. If we want to go above and beyond what is required by code, I don't believe we can require that, but we can offer trade-offs for that, incentives.
Okay.
So we can include that for checking the sustainability box.
Right.
And we have to make sure that we comply with the stretch code.
Yeah.
And then the changes of that.
Darren, you got any? Nope. You're good.
I have a couple, yeah, a couple of questions. I did see a couple of places, specifically 8, 10, 6, that's talking about limiting parking garages to one story. Did we intend to do that, to limit them only to one story?
I agree that it's, they need, by right, it's one story, but by, they could seek permission to go higher than that, right? So that one story underground and then first floor.
So I think that's one of the thoughts our consultant was suggesting, like, maybe just allow one story as of right, like, no special permissions, and if you want more, then you might need special permission from the planning board.
So essentially, you're building a parking deck or a parking garage.
Okay, yeah, that was the thought. Okay, that's fine. Okay, and then on, on the setbacks that we had, and, okay, on the page, on page four, we had 75 feet for two family and townhouses. But I, I seem to recall we talked about height of building versus setback. And the thought is that with a two-family or a townhouse, obviously with a big apartment building, obviously we need a good setback. But should we allow those to be maybe a little closer?
So Joe pulled up some of the suggested setbacks from the, for the consultant. And as you suggested, they, I think, had explored varying setbacks. So if you go past, remember there are some sub-districts.
Right.
That take care of next to the main roads.
Right.
They get looked at differently. They're suggesting far less severe setbacks once you're off the beaten path, so to speak.
So the 75 is only from 110? Is that what we're saying? Or from the main road?
They have listed Littleton Road, Powers Road and Concord Road.
Right.
Mm-hmm. The question we kind of typed in here is whether or not Littleton Road will be needed still given so much of it has kind of culled the last time McMac met.
Right.
Because you're really talking Regency Parcel, Swim and Tennis Parcel, and maybe a couple along Area B. There's only those remaining on Littleton Road. So it may just be your concern about a setback from Powers Road now at this point.
Okay. Okay, so the 75 is from only the main roads and then, okay, got it. Sorry.
No, that makes sense. Good question.
And then the last one was, sorry, just let me pull it back up here. Okay, townhouse, with story limits. And we said townhouses, we were limiting to three stories. So my question on that was, would it be possible, because, and I've seen it architecturally, it looks very nice, where you have in effect a four-story or three and a half story townhouse where the first level, your parking could be in the back, parking, and then maybe a room, two levels, and then maybe a loft or a half story. So is limiting to three stories really smart or could we maybe allow three, three and a half as we are with stacked flats?
Well, I think that what you're describing is if you have a sloped lot.
Right.
That would work. But if it's a flat lot, now you're going to get four stories.
Yes.
So you have to differentiate between the two, and who's going to determine whether it's sloped enough to do that or not.
Ratio in place for determining median grade?
Yes, average ground surface is one of our favorites.
It's one of your favorites. Yeah, I can tell.
But that's something, how about we just take that thought, talk to our consultant, see what they come back with.
One of the other concepts in here on trails, I appreciate, there was a lot of recognition about trail accessibility, connectivity with pedestrian ways. The one thing I'd like to see in here is some assurances that these trails will be available for the general public and not just for use in that development. So.
We will work with our consultant and town council to see.
Just getting that language in there, yeah.
See what we can do with that, right?
It's close. The other comment I had was on the blank wall definition, there was a little figure in there. And it looked like there was an error in terms of how it was displayed for the third floor in that diagram. I agreed with what they showed on the first floor. Second floor was questionable. It wasn't quite clear what the span of the floor was. It's a separate figure down below.
That the one?
Yes. So understood the definition on the first floor, that blank wall. I was trying, I was struggling with that, those two little blank walls up on the third floor. I thought they should extend to the floor line like they did on the first level, but.
We can have our consultant.
Just have a look at that. Make sure the figure match, matches the concept.
Going back on the other, where it shows all the different types of housing. Where it shows that, it shows two-family dwelling, front and back, and then it shows townhouse next to it. But it's the same picture, so I, I don't know if we really want the same picture.
Yeah, we, we.
We like that.
Okay.
And also stacked flats should be colored along the lines similar to the two-family dwelling. It should show, and that's another thing is stacked flats didn't make it in the definitions. I think I understood the concept, but it's, it's not well shown by coloring the whole building blue.
Yeah, our consultant did a lot of work in very short time period and.
No, I mean, I mean, the other ones were clear. I understood, but.
Do we want to talk a little bit about design standards being in the bylaw or separate or?
Sure. Pros and cons to both.
Yeah, pros and cons. I mean, it seemed like people, at least at that October 26th meeting, were really focused on how things look on architectural and, you know, very happy with the fact that, oh, you know, they could select this style over this style. So in that vein, I think it may behoove us to leave architectural standards in the bylaw because I think it'll be favorable.
I agree. As long as there's some flexibility, you know, the board can, okay.
As long as we get a craft beverage establishment.
Yeah, there you go.
Well, we're, we're working on that, so. Okay, Jeff, what else you need?
I think the whole, I think we got the guidance we needed tonight. I didn't know if anyone has, anyone else from McMac or the public, if they have anything they want to say? I mean, we are trying to outreach with the public. Does anyone have anything they want to say?
Yeah, if anyone can come up to the microphone if you want to.
Emily Teller, 9 Texas Road. A couple of things. I know early in the meeting you talked about businesses who might be not contacted in case they wanted to convert some of their buildings. And I don't think there's a list of businesses in Westford that anybody has in terms of contact information because I know I tried to get that when Westford Climate Action sort of first got started because we want to get in touch with businesses. So that might be a good thing to do, and maybe there are some businesses who have some interest in converting into housing units. But good luck because that'd be a good idea. You also talked about the original number of parcels and telling the public hearing sort of what those were, showing that versus sending it into the state. And I think anytime you can educate the public prior to their consideration of something, it's really good. That's also really important for town meeting. And I think also the bylaw language is so detailed that there's going to have to be a lot of public education on this. I'm a little concerned about what our next few town meetings in terms of drawing attendance. Some people may not be as interested in learning the details of things versus voting what they think. So I just caution both boards that education's really going to be important in this because it's something really new. And I, the parcel for Westford Swim and Tennis, so much of it was Xed out. I'm kind of curious why because there's a lot of land there. So that's just me giving you public input of, it seemed it was crosshatched, and I think that.
Those are adjoining parcels.
That was a place.
So the D is just Westford Swim and Tennis.
Yeah.
Thank you. So that's information that's helpful to know, too.
Concerned there, Emily.
Thank you. I also would want to input somehow using native plants for these developments. I think that's increasingly important. And also, I'm always concerned about sustainability of trees that are planted and that the proponents are required for viability for those. It just breaks my heart to see trees planted and then they just never thrive. Solar array over perhaps?
Just only one, one thing. Some of the suggested language, I believe, does make reference to our recent tree planting plan based on that MVP grant. And I think they are even suggesting some trees that have significant, that are considered significant size. I think it's 18 inches or more.
Great.
Something like that.
But they need water. They need a lot of water the first year. And I don't know who's gonna do that, so thank you very much. I think solar arrays over parking, like the Carlisle School has, might be a consideration on incentivization in terms of if there is one ground-level parking to maybe do a solar over that. If the roofs don't, I would love your saying, you know, facing south, I think that's great. Two more things, slope versus garage on the ground floor. I think it's called Maple Leaf Lane, which is off of Powers Road in Parker Village. I, I kind of be, I'm sad when I see a townhouse with a garage and then knowing that people have to go up steps all the time with baby strollers and groceries and all that stuff. I think that's a difficult situation to impose on either elderly or people with children or affordable situations. So, I, I just throw that in as a concern. And the last thing, my other thing beside trees and native plants is lighting. I really hope that full shielded cutoff will be considered for these, because many of them will be along 110. There's gonna be enough lighting around them anyway. And so, I would hope that if they're setback, that they can get some sense of dark skies to the extent that they can. So, thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right, McMac?
I had one other comment.
Okay.
Across the board, one thing I noticed, too, was inconsistent use of blocking techniques for either blocking the visibility of a dumpster or trash receptacle or something else. And there are cases where you reference landscaping and cases where you reference stone walls, and sometimes not both. And I just want to mention, you know, I, I think natural stone walls over a fence sometimes is preferable. And that is something we did reference in the 110 master plan. So, just looking at that throughout the bylaw for consistency.
Okay, great, thanks, Bob. McMac, if anything else to add? We appreciate you coming in, all your hard work, for sure. Thank you.
Anybody have motion to adjourn?
Thank you, guys. Jeff, did you guys get to?
Yeah, it's all, all done, all good.
You could bring in your executed part, Will.
I got it right here.
All right, good.
You or Jeff?
Joe. All right, so I think our last bit of business is minutes.
I'll move that we approve the planning board meeting minutes of November 6, 2023.
There's been a motion to approve the minutes, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion?
Nope.
Nope.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
And correspondence notes, reports, I see we have something here from the Friends of the Bruce Freeman Trail.
She just left.
All right, well, it's a good little pamphlet we have in here, so that's good, we'll take a look at this.
Yep.
Uh, is there anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.